You're going to call to order Budget Committee and Board Work Session for the Urban Flood Safety and Water Quality District. And today is June 8th. Wendy, would you like me to just go ahead and call roll based on who I see on my screen, or do you want to do that? What would be easier?
I'll go through on my sheets and I see Bob Sanders trying to join as well. But Mike Jordan not present, Steve Fancher not present, Eric Mueller. Steve. Dave Ripma. Not present. John Niama. Shirley Craddock. Nazi Shirley. Laura Stegman. Anne Gravitz. Here. Cork Cullier said might be coming. James Allison.
Here.
Mary Helen Kincaid is expecting her. Tanny Stephenson.
Here.
Eric Molander.
Present.
Janelle Bell. Ed Washington.
Here.
Oh, and let me try again and let these folks in. Bob Salinger. Let's see if I'm coming.
Welcome, Bob.
Eight members present so far.
And I think Wendy, just in terms of transparency, I know that Commissioner Stegman and Michael Jordan and Steve Fancher at least all let us know they weren't going to be able to attend. I'm not sure if others did as well, but I think it's important for the board to know that many members work hard to let us know they can't make it. And then there are some who sometimes forget to let us know.
Great, thank you, Wendy. Well, once again, thank you for being inside on a rare glorious spring day. Just quickly, in terms of the agenda, we're going to have a meeting schedule discussion, a board training from SDAO, and an equity strategy development session. We're going to try to take a five plus minute break between the board training and the equity strategy, strategy development, so you can stretch your legs and we can kind of reorient toward that second topic. We'll be able to do that. I guess with that, we'll go ahead and move into Agenda Item Two, which is the meeting schedule discussion, Wendy.
Everyone, I'm not going to repeat my memo. We've been talking around this for a couple of months and trying to find a possible alternative meeting time to maximize board members' possibilities. And based on the information I have, I'm just putting out a couple of options of the 2:00 to 4:00 PM on the second Thursday, or 3:00 to 5:00 on the third Thursday. And wanted to, no one, that memo's been out for a month and a half now, and no one has told me that they cannot attend those times, but I'm not sure whether people have focused their attention on that. So this is to start that conversation. And I mean, my thoughts is that we would give people a couple of months lead time before we officially change the schedule. That is in our bylaws that we'll meet on the third Monday.
Are there any questions or discussion?
I'm sorry, I was going to ask, does it require us to amend the bylaws at this meeting?
I'm just looking for general direction. I think that if the board wants to make a decision, we'll just bring it back to you in a couple of weeks for official action.
And it would require a bylaw amendment, unfortunately, but we can change the language to make it subject to, you know, board's approval. But right now, the bylaw does specifically specify Monday, so. But we'll get there when we get there.
So Wendy, were you saying that if we change it or one of the two Thursday times, it's still going to be a couple of months till we implement that? Is that what you're saying?
I wouldn't suggest doing it before August. We could, there's also been some discussion about possible in-person meetings as well. So we want to give people as much lead time as possible. So that would be up for you about when you'd want to start doing this. But September would be an option. August, not before August, so.
Got it. My only request is that we make a decision and then get it on the calendars because it does, I travel some and it's just hard with not having things on my calendar going out forward. But either of the Thursday times generally works for me.
The advantage to the third Thursday is it's that same week and it provides a week off. So you have that first Wednesday work session and then a third of a month week for an actual meeting.
I think we had Eric and then Tanny.
Yeah, I was going to say either worked for me. I guess I would prefer the two to four rather than the three to five. But your point about there being a week off in between, I understand the benefit of that, so I can work with either one.
Tanny?
Wendy, how many people have not commented or weighed in on this? Or do you know, I mean, they've had plenty of time, but how many have not?
Yeah, it's hard to say exactly. I don't have that document open, but I would say maybe half the board has weighed in. Unfortunately. And I'm not sure if they're the same half, so.
Tanny, maybe if you'd be willing, Wendy and I can pull together a list and we could work with you to get some board members to follow up with those folks who haven't responded.
Yeah, that'd be great because I'm wondering, would this be the same time for in-person too? Is that what you're thinking?
I think that's really up to you guys, but that would likely be the case, yes. So Wendy, let's work on getting that list of people who haven't responded, pull together, work with Tanny.
Some of the respondents were, again, no one has responded to these specific dates. So the last thing, the first thing that happened was that poll and there was not consensus. The second thing that happened is I asked you all for your complete schedules. And based on that, I've proposed these two days as they seem to work, but it was a lot of jumble of information. It wasn't a scientific poll. So we could, I would suggest actually, I mean, I just hate to keep sending these out because not everyone responds. And so I think perhaps as you're saying, Tanny, like some specific phone calls to check in might be a good next step to. People are leaning towards doing that.
I'd be totally willing to work on that and getting, you know, consistent quorum and not having to fight quorum every meeting. I think it'd be good for all of us.
Okay, so Wendy and I will pull a list together of people who would benefit from some outreach and thank you for your willingness to help, Tanny.
You bet, be happy to.
Eric?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, these two times work for Counselor Craddock and Commissioner Stegman, do they? Because that was kind of one of the driving issues is they were always conflicted out.
Yes, to my knowledge, they do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, Wendy, thank you for all of the work on this. And Tanny, thanks for volunteering to help. I'll also volunteer to contact however many are needed because we do want to get folks here as regularly as possible. With that, are we ready to move on to Agenda Item Three, the board training?
Well, Tanny, I don't know if you wanted to talk further about. There was some discussion about in-person meetings as well.
Yeah, one of the things we were looking at, and we can do this after we get, you know, some more information, but maybe having like at least a quarterly in-person meeting. I don't know, I think it'd be good for us to get together. At least on like, if nothing else, a quarterly basis and see the pump station and kind of, you know, not everyone on the board's got a real good history of what we do in the drainage district and how it works. And I just think it'd be beneficial for us all.
And we are obligated by law to always provide an online option for people, so we're prepared to be able to provide that.
So be more of a hybrid, but. I would think there would be a benefit to that for everybody. Okay, a couple of thumbs up. Right, great.
Having been involved for about six years now, I can second what Tanny says. The benefit of getting together periodically and seeing each other has been great. I do want to just point out and also recognize MCD that in that the hybrid meeting option has been an option even prior to COVID. So there were many occasions where board members from the four different boards would have to call in. And, you know, the technology has probably improved since MCD made its original investment probably four years ago. But it's nice to know that we had that option then, so that people can find a way to participate. And so I think going forward, if we can have, make an effort to prioritize an in-person meeting occasionally, and then also have the, always maintain the hybrid option, as Jim noted.
Great.
Just mention as well, we are still planning a fun day for you in one of the August meetings to meet staff and then also have an opportunity to speak with our legislators. So we're just finalizing some of the dates with them and still look for some more communications around that.
Thank you. Mark, I don't want to butcher your last name. Do you go by Knudsen? And I'm not prepared to introduce you, so maybe you can introduce yourself.
Very good, thank you very much. I go by Mark Knudsen. I'm sure this is an artifact of some Ellis Island entrance Americanization of a Norwegian name. But at any rate, I'll get to my self-introduction here in a minute. But thanks, everyone, for the opportunity to be here and provide sort of an overview of some board training that SDAO has provided to other organizations over the years. A little bit of an opening comment, and let me see if I can get this screen share here. So you should be able to see my screen at this point. Is that, we good? Cool. Okay, we have a pile of material that we're going to try to go over in the next hour. And I will tell you that typically this presentation is part of a broader presentation that runs about four hours. So we have whacked it down to keep it as concise as possible and get it within the one-hour allotment that you have. So that said, there's probably some material we're not going to get to. You can undoubtedly going to have some questions or concerns. And I would encourage you to follow up with your staff. They'll get back to me and we are more than happy to share additional information as appropriate to answer any questions or concerns because this is a shortened version of the training. The other part of the training is that typically we provide this for a broad range of districts. You know, everybody from water districts to sanitary districts and soup to nuts. And that said, I have worked with your staff a little bit to try and tailor it as specific as we could to make it relevant to your organization. But that said, again, this is not the be-all, end-all presentation of everything you need to know about your organization. So if there are questions or concerns or issues that are particularly relevant for your organization, then I would sure encourage you to follow up with staff. And again, we're happy to work with them and provide follow-up comments as necessary. Again, we're going to cover a bunch of material today. I'll do my very best to pause for a moment to catch my breath at the end of each one of these sections. But again, this presentation will probably go very close to the hour. So if we can kind of hold most of the questions to the end, I would certainly appreciate that. So let's talk a little bit about special districts in general. First of all, what is a special district? Well, it's a local form of government created by the community. And that's really the key issue here is that it is by the community to meet specific needs. And so again, very specific focus of each organization. Currently, there are about 1,000 special districts in Oregon. By comparison, there's about 240 incorporated cities in Oregon. So four times as many special districts as there are cities. And I think that's a reflection of the significance that special districts provide in meeting the needs of local communities in terms of infrastructure and services. There are 34 different types of districts currently. I'll run through a quick list of those. One of the key features of special districts, oops, is that they can cross city and county boundaries. That's particularly significant for you folks that provide services in an area that cross city boundaries. And so again, I mean, it's a very flexible organization, although it has very specific limits. And we'll talk about that. As a local government, it has the ability to do all those things that are listed, most notably to be able to sue and be sued. So it's a very powerful organization. It just has some very important limits. In terms of the 34 kinds of organizations that are listed here, again, everything from airports and ambulances all the way to water control and water improvements and pretty much everything in between. Most common type of district is fire protection. Second is, you know, domestic water supply. And then we get into things like parks and recreations. It's surprising to me, special road districts. You know, when I first got into this business, I had no clue what a special road district was. Geographically, they're distributed across the state, mostly focused in populated areas, of course, the valley and the coast. But even clear out here in, you know, far corner of the state, southeast Oregon, you have a handful of special districts meeting local needs. So again, good geographic distribution. So what is SDAO, the Special Districts Association of Oregon? And that's who I'm with. We assist special districts in providing cost-effective and efficient public services to the people of the state. We're about a little over 40 years old. Was originally set up to be an advocacy group dealing with, you know, legislative and regulatory issues at kind of local level. We've since expanded over a long time to be able to provide things like training and information and support resources, governed by a 12-member Board of Directors from folks that are just like yourself, senior members of staff and elected officials and board members that serve on the Board of SDAO and provide its direction. I mentioned the 1,000 districts across the state. Right now, we have over 900 members of those 1,000 districts, so good participation. And one of the key features that SDAO provides is through our sister organization called SDIS, or Special Districts Insurance Services. It's basically another arm of SDAO, if you will. And what we do is we pool the risks associated with our members so that we can provide cost-effective insurance services to our members. It's a great tool to get some leverage and economies of scale and help meet those needs of the local districts. And again, I mean, it's worked out phenomenally well, to the point I think MCD receives its insurance services through SDIS. Now, my self-introduction, I'm a senior consultant with SDAO. I have, it says 35, really 40 years of utility management experience. I'm previously the Chief Executive Officer at Towahatchee Valley Water District, the second largest water provider in the state. I'll let you guess who the largest one is. And also one of the largest special districts in the state. I also worked for the City of Portland at the Water Bureau as Director of Operations and Maintenance for many years. I'm a recovering professional engineer. I serve on a lot of different boards. I'm on the Board of the Oregon Infrastructure Finance Authority. Up until recently, I was on the Board of Okla Lodge Water Services. We'll talk more about that. So the point is, I've seen these issues from both the board perspective as well as the staff and senior management perspective. And so I have a lot of experience with these issues, a lot of war stories that I would be more than happy to share as we go along here. So dealing into the meat of, diving into the meat of the issue, let's talk about district and board authority. So where does the district get its authority to do what it does? Well, in the case of your organization, it comes from, and we'll refer to this as the principal act, the act that empowers the district to do what it is, in your case, is ORS 550. Different districts have different principal acts, but they all generally are similar in many respects, that they provide the duties and powers of the board and the organization as a whole. Other statutes come into play in terms of things like ORS 198 that defines things like elections and recall. A lot of other statutes to sort of provide guidance on a lot of these issues that are listed here. But the real bottom line is, in your case, it's the principal act of ORS 550 that establishes the board duties and the district authorities. In addition to those statutory, very explicit or expressed powers, the district also has implied powers, the ability to do things like purchasing, employment, contracting. All of those things covered in various parts of other statutes and other laws, but they all apply to your organization in terms of supporting the ability to exercise your primary objective or your authority overall based on ORS 550. The other important piece to mention, and this begins to sort of clarify an important difference between cities and counties and special districts, is that cities have what's typically referred to as home rule charter authority. Simplistically, what that means is that cities and counties can make decisions that basically aren't maybe especially limited in terms of a specific statutory authority, but they are able to have the power to do what they believe to be in the best interests of their citizens and their community. So a specific example of that, let's say that a city wants to become an internet service provider for its city residents. They have the authority to be able to do that, even though it's not explicitly expressed within statute per se. And so if you look at in comparison, a water district, let's say a water district wanted to become an internet service provider. Well, they're very limited in what they can do largely because their authority and their role and responsibility within the community is defined by statute. That statute doesn't include doing things like being an internet service provider, and so they couldn't pursue that opportunity. So again, very big difference in terms of the flexibility and overall authority that cities and counties and even metro has as compared to a special district. Overall, the board's role, and you'll hear me say this time and time again today, is to basically set policy and direction for the organization. That's the board's authority. In doing so, hopefully, they're pursuing the best interests of the community and their constituents. The way that the board exercises that authority is by setting policy and direction through what's called a board action. Basically, a formal decision by the board. To be an effective and appropriate enforceable board action, it has to be called, has to be done in a public meeting. You have to have a quorum of the board present, has to be approved by a majority of the board, and votes have to be taken publicly. You're aware of all of this, there's no surprises here. But the point is, these are the requirements for being able to exercise your authority as the board in setting the policy and direction of your organization. You have a couple of tools in your toolbox that allow you to do that. One is legislative authority. That's really, again, this authority that you have to be able to establish the policy and direction of the organization. That's doing things like establishing the district budget, approving a capital plan, setting rules and regulations, entering into intergovernmental agreements. Those are all an exercise of your legislative authority. You can do that in a couple of ways. One is through an ordinance. That's in, and again, in my simple mind, that's equivalent to like a local law. You have the ability to establish that local law that becomes enforceable. That's important for setting things like rules and regulations or setting rates where you expect the community to be able to follow and that you can enforce those standards, if you will, on the community. And so that happens through an ordinance. And then you have the flexibility to set just a policy statement, if you will, or guidance and direction. That's a much more simpler procedure in terms of establishing a resolution, can be approved in fairly short order, typically just one reading, one meeting. And that then provides the guidance that can help govern things like internal operations. And then you have administrative authority. Technically, theoretically, the board is responsible for things like implementing practices and procedures that guide the day-to-day operation and administration of the district. Things like, they're listed here, HR, you know, positions, hiring, financial procedures, operating standards, all important features that really are an implementation of the guidance that the board establishes through board-approved policies. But what's really important is the delegation of that authority. Your legislative authority is a board can't be delegated. So you are responsible for setting the policy. You can't defer that to others. But administrative authority can be delegated. So that policy implementation role really becomes not only a could be delegated, but in many cases probably should be delegated to your experienced staff and professionals. Specifically, SDAO recommends that board members should use caution in exercising the administrative power that you hold because of the potential for liability, workers' comp, staff morale, and other considerations. That's why you want your experienced staff, professionals, to be able to be in a position of implementing the policy direction that you set. In terms of your board member rights and duties, again, it really stems from the principle act, ORS 550. You have an awesome set of bylaws. I wish most of my clients had such thorough bylaws. This is a really great document, and I would encourage you all, if you haven't done so already, to take the time to read it and refer to it on a regular basis. It does things like define member roles and duties, the officer duties, quorum requirements, meetings, employment. And so again, great guidance document that really defines the board member rights and duties. Another key feature here is that the board, as it currently exists, my understanding that it's really an interim board and to that end, is responsible for organizing the district and responsible for creating a funding mechanism as established under ORS 550. And Jim, I'll refer to you. I don't know if you want to make any other comments or reference to this particular section.
And Hong, would you like to add anything? I know you're on. We try and toe the line here and we know that some of the decisions will be.
I'm having some internet problems, so.
You all know your interim and your job is to get that initial revenue set up and call for the dissolution. And then we'll have the elected board with the additional gubernatorial appointees probably oversee the development of the implementation aspects of the statute around the watershed plan and some of the equity actions and other things as we move forward.
Awesome, okay, thank you. It's a really important point and again, very unique to your district, but I think it's important to highlight that.
I don't think it necessarily changes any of the policy or administrative authorities this board has. They're consistent with what the next board has, but the focus is on that initial setup. Would that be correct, Mark, in your view?
Oh, absolutely, no. And what you're doing now is establishing a really rock-solid foundation. I mean, you've done some really good work here, as shown by even these district policies we're talking about. So it's a great start, a great step in the right direction. And so as this change with the board occurs, I think you've got a great starting place for moving forward. And another key role, responsibility that the board members have is, of course, understanding and adhering to district policies. So of course, there's the bylaws, and that's why that should become sort of your reference document on an ongoing basis. But the board is also, as I understand it, established some very important policies and again, sort of setting the foundation here. And so things like prohibiting workplace harassment, financial delegation of authority. Again, you see this delegation role, local contract review board rules that do things like establish, you know, the authorities of staff versus what issues need to come to the board. And then just financial policies in general. These are important policies. These are important policies, and although there's a lot of delegation here that goes to staff, it's really important that the board understand. What those thresholds might be in some of these decisions and generally the expectations between board and staff. In terms of how these various functions work. I I frequently get asked a question about immunity as as board members. Uh, do we have any uh indemnity uh regarding the decisions that we make? Uh, as a board and a board member, you're entitled to indemnity uh under the Oregon Torque Claims Act, O T C A. For claims of negligence against the board and and that doesn't mean that there's, there may be no claim, but it there's there's certain thresholds and. And limits that are established under the Oregon Torque Claims Act and and that offers. The individuals and the organizations some very important protection. What's what's important even more so is that you're not entitled, both the organization and board members are not entitled to those. Uh, statutory limits. If you act outside the course and scope of your position. So if you make, you know, individual decisions that that require. Uh, action and and it it winds up being found that that was an inappropriate thing. You know, things go sideways, there's a claim against the organization. It could be at some point that you might be personally responsible if you act outside the course and scope of your position. Uh, either as an individual or as an organization. Um, you can be found personally liable for repayment of unlawful expenditure of public funds. Um, what does that mean? Well, you know, the simplistic example would be one of. Of you request uh district uh funds to be used to pay for personal expense. Uh, that's that's inappropriate and that could be considered a violation. Um, maybe a a bigger and even more timely issue is. If if you uh if the board didn't have an approved budget, if the organization didn't have an approved budget and and at times it has happened. Uh, technically, the board could potentially, individual board members could be personally liable for expenses occurred. That um. Happen without a budget, approved budget in place. Um, I, you know, ultimately, I've never seen it really happen that way, but. But the fact of the matter is, I'm told that that's a very potential, real potential outcome. If you don't have a budget in place, that board members could be personally rely personally liable. Um, and and then just sort of a interesting uh. Historical reference, I guess, let's go with that. Uh, O R S two thirty six includes reference to that. You could become ineligible for office. You could get the boot from the board if you're a member of or affiliated with an organization that teaches the doctrine. Or advocates for the overthrow of the government of the United States by force of violence. Now, this was really a historic artifact that just seemed to always be amusing when we included this in training in years past. Uh, seems to be a little more relevant than timely these days, but uh it's it's. It's in statute, so it's something to be aware of in terms of your role on the board.
Mark, can I, can I just add? A comment to the previous slide. With respect to indemnity and I'll, you know, plug S D I S here. That uh the S D I S also provides insurance coverage to the urban district. In addition to all the other drainage districts we administer, so. Um, and with that, uh, to the extent that there is indemnity, there is insurance policies that would cover any claims. Uh, that arise from the board's action or the action of staff uh as they are within the scope of. Of the position. So I just wanted to clarify that.
No, I I I appreciate that and I appreciate the added clarification that again, it's still within the course and scope of the. The duties and responsibilities of of individual board members and the organization. That's that's really the key there. Um, other ways that you can lose your position on the board. Um, somebody dies or resigns. You no longer meet qualifications for the position. For example, um. Here a few months ago, we moved out, our family chose to move out of the service area of Oklahoma Water Services. We no longer were a customer of Oklahoma Water Services, and so even though I was a board member, I needed to resign my position. Because I didn't meet the qualifications to serve on the board any longer. Um, I I was really bummed because I enjoy that role. That was really important, but uh, but that said, we we made the change. Um, similarly, if you don't take the oath of office or you don't take the oath of office within the prescribed time period. Um, if you are convicted of an infamous crime, I'm not quite sure exactly what an infamous crime is, but I guess you'd know it if you see it. Uh, if you violate the oath of office. If your election is declared void by a competent tribunal, I think simplicity. Simplistically, you can think of a competent tribunal as court. If you're mentally diseased and unable to complete the duties of a board member, uh, and that is a finding of the court. Or, and again, this is in the constitution and other interesting historical artifact. If you agree to engage in or do engage in a duel or curry a challenge to a duel with another person. So as long as you are on the board, please no dueling. Um, I I'll I'll pause there. Any any questions related to the board and district authorities? And if not, I will keep moving. Okay, awesome. So board and staff expectations, and to me, this is probably one of the most important parts of the whole discussion. So I always start with this sort of simplified hierarchy or framework. It seems pretty intuitive. It's pretty easy. Basically, you have members of the public that you're working with. You have the board that is in the position to provide that policy direction and guidance in terms of achieving the objectives of the organization. You have uh senior executives or senior staff, in your case, the executive director. And then you have the rest of the staff within the organization. It's kind of just a layer cake here. It's pretty straightforward in terms of how it all works. But you'd be surprised how confusing it gets with some organizations. The point that I really want to make and want to leave you with more than anything else is some guiding principles. And first of all. The board's authority comes from the public. It's really, again, it's this statutory authority that you have in your case from O R S five fifty. That has granted you the authority and powers that you have. That's the board's authority. And as board members, certainly the board has the authority to exercise that power. As individual board members, you have very little authority, frankly, the decisions, and this is the key, the decisions are made by the board. Not by the individual board members. And so that that really becomes an important factor carrying forward. Similarly, the executive director in your case is accountable to the board. Um, you the the whole staff doesn't report to the board. This limited number of employees, in your case, the executive director, the chief engineer, maybe the general counsel. But that's the extent of the board's staff. And the rest of the staff then reports to the senior executive positions. It's important to keep that hierarchy in place. Staff works for the executive director, not for the board. So why do folks get confused on this issue? Well. Particularly in the Portland area, we have organizations that kind of have unique governance frameworks. I'll pick on the city of Portland where you have. The mayor and commissioners who have very unique uh charter authority, or you have city commissioners who are responsible for. Operational aspects of the bureaus to which they are assigned. Um, and so it seems like gee, a city commissioner has these superpowers. Well, in the case of the city of Portland, they do. But that's not the model that exists for special districts. Um, in a difference, in in addition, there's some differences in terms of authority of various positions, mayor versus city council or board member versus. Board chair. Um, that becomes a little confusing. The things that I hear most often are are really what I would characterize as individual motivations. I'm just trying to help as a board member. I'm just trying to make a difference here. I want to save us some money. I want to offer my expertise. You can do all of those things as board members. Absolutely. We want your help. We want you to save us money. We want your expertise. But you do it through the board because remember, the board makes the decisions, not the individual board members. Uh, another one that comes up occasionally is gee, a staff member told me I should look into this. So you got a board member who's got, quote, inside information. That's great. That can be very helpful, but do use it in a way that's constructive and consistent with this model, which is to say. Take that information, either share it with the board chair, share it with other board members, share it with your executive director. But use the framework to be able to address it rather than dealing with it individually as an individual board member. And uh, last and my favorite uh explanation in terms of why things go sideways sometimes. Well, but we've always done it this way. Um, I I'm dealing right now with a very large, regionally significant uh uh economic. Basic uh district that. That you have a board president who's been on the board for over thirty years. He's been the board president for more than a decade. Really nice guy. Consistently reaches into the organization and does things like. Makes shift assignments, makes staffing assignments. And and the organization is just in total turmoil. The balance of the board is really concerned concerned about the performance of the general manager. When in fact, the general manager is saying. If we just followed our own rules, we'd be in great shape, but the board president's explanation is, but we've always done it this way. Don't let you become that organization. Again, recognize the. The framework that we have, the hierarchy that we have, and appreciate the fact that individual board members really don't take action. It's the full board that takes action. So how can you be effective as a board member? Well, uh, I think there are things that are important to be aware of. One is get oriented. And again, I think you've done a lot of this already, but you know, take the time to review the statute and your bylaws. As I like to say, be present, be prepared and be informed. Yeah, you have to be present to win. You have to be engaged. You have to be prepared, and if you want to make good decisions, you really need to be informed. Um, be honest, courteous, and on time. These are things we learned in kindergarten, right? Uh, it's basically just another way to be respectful for your board members, for the rest of the organization and members of the public. And and once decisions are made, then your role kind of shifts because that board has made a decision. It's time for you now as a board member to represent those board positions and board actions. You may not fully agree with it, but the fact of the matter is you need to be in a position to represent it because that was the direction of the board. And last but not least, understand your roles and responsibility and particularly in working with the executive director. Similarly, you know, as this senior staff or executive director, uh, you you should have expectations. The board should have expectations for them. I often like to think of the executive director or senior staff as an extension of the board in many respects. It ought to be a positive working relationship to move together in the same direction. So you you'll see that a lot of parallels exist between expectations of the executive director and expectations of the board. But I think the the most important piece here is is to communicate those expectations. I can offer suggestions like are listed here. But really, at some point, there needs to be a conversation between. The board and the executive director in terms of what are the expectations for. For that individual's performance and for the direction and what kind of. What kind of organization do we want to be? Do we want to be, you know, positive with strong outreach? And so it's much more of a strategic conversation. As opposed to just kind of the the bullet points that are listed here. One of the biggest challenges that I deal with with uh special districts is where the special district has gone literally years. Without a performance expectation of their chief executive. Um, it happens all the time. And and I I love the explanation, which is gee, we evaluate the performance of our chief executive every month at the board meeting. And and that's partially true. It really is, but but what's missing is if you're always looking backwards at the performance, you're missing the opportunity. Be able to provide that sort of strategic direction of what the expectation is going forward. Performance evaluations are much more about focused on the future than they are about the past. So. Again, have some clear expectations for your executive director. I'll pause. Questions about board and staff expectations.
I guess I would share with uh the urban board that M C D D is about to complete the. Executive Director Evaluation Process and the General Counsel Process as well. And if you guys want to play a bigger role in that, you should probably have your chair talk to the Chair of M C D D. Uh, since we're shifting our focus over to you all. So I think it's an interesting topic of discussion for. Your board officers to consider with M C D D.
Okay. All right, uh, I will move.
I have a question. Sorry, I couldn't get to the raise my hand thing fast enough. Um. I'm one that's um. Admittedly asks a lot of questions because I don't have a big history in government boards. A lot of community action kinds of boards, and I know they're they're different. But um, and I probably fall into that category is. I know things and I just want to help you and I understand the gravity of being able to say that and but what? How a a and I want to make sure I understand your explanation because I want to be able to do this correctly. Um. How best to address? Um, how things operate and and this training is excellent, but um. And I understand that Wendy's putting together or has put together, and I haven't had a chance because we just talked yesterday. About the bylaws being on the website, what policies we have, what amendments we have, so that I know. What we've said we would do, and that's partly my irresponsibility as a board member, not keeping a good track of those, but. Um, I I i- is that the best way? I mean, i- is being being more informed about those things and it. And it's perfectly fine to say, um, you aren't informed enough, and so don't ask a question until you think you're informed. Um, I I guess I kind of am confused about that little process there.
Sure. No, uh, uh, thanks, Mary Helen. That's that's a really wonderful question. Um, again, I mean, it really gets to the heart of some of the the biggest challenges that we see and and. And my suggestion, my observation, and again, I'll make this as a generalized comment as opposed to specific to your organization. But the but the point is, yes, certainly take the time to to review that material, be familiar with that material. But then ask questions about that. I mean, a lot of these policies, and again, I mean, I'm talking very general here. I haven't reviewed all your policies. But 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 they can be kind of convoluted or confusing sometimes, certainly maybe not yours, but. But what I see can be sort of subject to interpretation. And so I don't think it's unreasonable to say, gee, I've reviewed this material. I would love the opportunity to to sit down and ask these fifteen questions. I don't think that's unreasonable. If if I was your executive director or general manager, I'd love the opportunity to sit down bullet by bullet, question by question. And review those things. Similarly, if if. If, yeah, there you go and.
Well, he has done that. Um, and but only because I blurted out at a meeting, probably rather inappropriately. Um, I don't understand what's going on. Are we just giving money to Jim's friends? I shouldn't have said Jim's friends. I should have said. How do you decide who to give the money to? I'm not the most politically correct person. I'm not tied to a government agency. And so I I I was being asked questions by some. Um, leaders in the community that live in my neighborhood that I have to report to, and they keep track of things. And I didn't like answering to them, I don't know. And so then this topic came up. I didn't phrase it well. Um, Mike Jordan was a master at that, and so I need to go to the Mike Jordan School of. Um, how to handle questions in a meeting, but um, all that said. Uh, Jim has been very good at answering those things, and I think that's clear, and we've reached an understanding about that, but. Um, so I I appreciate that insight. Uh, it's trying to get to know you. Community boards are different in that you question everything because you don't know what's going on. Um, and there is no. State stat, well, sort of state statute, you know, public meetings, et cetera, but um, it of rules and regulations and how you're supposed to behave. So um, I I I think this training is very helpful and has enlightened me and probably staff as well. I mean, um. It's because, so go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, I know. I think it's important that it's a shared expectation, that that it's understandable that you have questions or concerns. And again, it's not just with policies. It can be with every board packet, and I think I get to this there in a few minutes, but. But you get a board packet. It has information in it that you don't understand or you don't agree with, or you have some heartburn with. Go ahead and send the email to just. Go ahead and send the email to just the staff that basically says, I need more information on this point. And and I would bet money that staff will do whatever it takes to be able to pull the information together, provide the clarification so that you're in a position of being informed when you go into the board meeting to be able to make a good decision. Okay, I'm gonna keep us moving forward here. Probably the there it is, the most exciting part of the whole presentation, ethics. Pardon me if I nod off, but again, a little bit of a disclaimer here, I'm I'm not an attorney. I don't claim to be an attorney. I think you have an awesome attorney that's available to you. I will tell you from my personal experience and personal perspective, Oregon government ethics laws can be challenging to understand, interpret and apply. Don't hesitate to ask questions of your general counsel. Don't hesitate to refer to guidance that's provided in this particular important book. If you don't have it, you should get it as a public official. It's available through the Oregon Government Ethics Commission website. Or pose a question to a very specific question to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission staff. Their staff and I've used them before several times. They're really great in getting back to specific questions. They love to field questions before they become problems. And so ask the questions before they blow up as an issue and a a claim of an ethics violation. So there's a lot of resources out there, but it is confusing. It can be sort of perilous waters. And so don't hesitate to sort of tread carefully here. That said, so just the highlights. Oregon Public Ethic Law Ethics Laws apply to all public officials. It is not just board members. It's not just elected and appointed individuals. It's candidates. That's interesting. It's also staff. So all of the staff for the organization is considered a public official. All of the volunteers and of that list, all their relatives. And that's where it becomes really interesting. So the scope of relatives as a term under the state ethics laws is very kind of all encompassing. Basically, there is a broad list here, but when in doubt, pose the question, but the fact of the matter is it's very broad. Anybody that the public official has a support obligation for, so it could be ex-spouses. They're still considered relatives and still covered by the Oregon Public Ethics Rules. In terms of the oversight and enforcement of ethics laws in Oregon, it is done by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. It's a great board. They basically provide that oversight direction. What I think is important, although they're appointed by the governor, they are basically your peers. These are individuals who are, you know, elected officials. They are senior managers. They are representatives of organizations that are subject to these laws. And to that end, I think they pretty consistently provided some very good decisions in terms of applying and interpreting what I find to be very sort of complex rules at times. In terms of specific requirements, and again, this is part of the presentation that can go on and on, and I've tried to keep it short, but important reminder that public officials may not appoint, employ or promote a relative within the public body. Of course, there are exceptions to that. Volunteers aren't subject to the nepotism requirement. There are requirements for conflict of interest and there's basically forms that can be filled out and there are ways to work with that. And interestingly enough, as you probably know, legislative staff is not subject to that requirement of no nepotism. So my personal perspective is it sure helps to write the laws. And of course, a public official cannot directly supervise a relative. Again, with the exception of legislative staff. This is a part of the presentation where there are about, you know, in the long version, there's like half a dozen slides that talk about things that public officials may not do. I boiled it down to this one slide. And and it really gets down to this. As a public official, you may not use or attempt to use your position or office to obtain personal financial gain or avoid personal financial detriment, but for your official position or office. So let's take that apart a little bit. Use or attempt to use. Use, that's pretty straightforward. That's you're going to receive a direct benefit. Attempt to use. So even asking the question can potentially be an ethics violation. So you really have to tread carefully here. Personal financial gain, that's pretty straightforward. That's like money in the bank or a delivery of materials that you're interested in that were provided by the the organization. That that sort of more confusing area is avoid a personal financial detriment. The the way to think of this, a simple example for me is discount. So government discount on motel room. Obviously, you are entitled to a government discount for a motel room when you're on district business. But you can't exercise that, you can't ask for that discount if you're traveling on personal business. So again, you're avoiding a financial detriment. And and again, that additional cost that is there because of the discount. And then last but not least, this issue of but for your official position or office. If it's a benefit that's available to everybody and their brother, all members of the public are eligible for the discount at Costco, whatever, then that's awesome. But if the only reason that that discount is realized is because you're using the Costco, the the district's Costco card, and otherwise you wouldn't have it, then you basically are avoiding a personal financial detriment. And you achieved that by your official position or capacity within the organization. So again, the but for test is also really critical. And and again, it it should be available to everybody and not just because you happen to be with the organization. Another area of the the rules that really get sort of confusing are this issue of accepting gifts. So the limit is you you can accept gifts up to fifty dollars from a source that has a legislative or administrative interest in the district's activities. What is a legislative or administrative interest? Well, the administrative interest is pretty clear. Yeah, you know, awarding a contract to a consultant and the consultant wants to give you a gift. That gift can't exceed fifty dollars, essentially fifty dollars per year per individual. What is a legislative interest? Well, let's just say that you're creating a policy that benefits one of your, you know, affiliated organizations. And and that that organization, the affiliated organization wants to thank you because it's benefited them in some way. They can't give you more than fifty dollars as a gift and appreciation for that strategy or whatever that decision was that was made as a legislative decision. Public officials may not accept accept payment for expenses related to entertainment. Can't accept honoraria. There are some important exceptions. If you get into a situation where you're potentially receiving an honoraria. Again, I would ask questions, pursue that with your council, pursue that with the Ethics Commission because I've found over the years that that part of the rule is really confusing to me personally. So get clarification on honoraria. You can't accept an offer, pledge or promise for future employment in exchange for a decision. So we're going to award this company a contract and oh, by the way, you go to work for them at some point in time in the near future. That would probably be considered a violation. And you can't attempt to use or use confidential information that you gained through your employment. So when I left T V W D, there were some organizations, particularly in Washington County, that I just simply couldn't work for as a consultant because I had knowledge of confidential information related to T V W D's operations that could be used as either a disadvantage to T V W D or a benefit to the clients. And so I just stayed away from that issue entirely by not working in Washington County for a period of time. From my perspective, there's really these three kinds of conflicts of interest. There is an actual conflict. There's a potential conflict. There is a perceived conflict. It's kind of shades of gray. Actual is a direct benefit. You can't do that. Potential conflict. It's pretty, you know, may or may not. I've seen this happen before on the infrastructure board. We had a member of the board who had family that lived in a community that was going to get a grant. They chose to recuse themselves from that particular decision because theoretically their family might benefit by the fact that they got a grant for water system improvements in that community. I think that's a little bit of a stretch. But the fact of the matter is it's a potential conflict. It's not a real conflict for the board member per se. And then there's this issue of perceived conflicts. You know, you are a family member, not going to benefit, it's clear, but the members of the public might perceive that there could be something funny there. You worked for this organization previously and you you know something about it or you have some insights. Generally, what I've seen happen in those situations is that the the board member will identify that relationship, disclose that relationship that had previously existed. But that doesn't especially mean that it prevents you from participating in the decision. So perceived conflicts, a little bit of shades of gray there, but but it's just something to be aware of. So it's it's a spectrum. It's not always quite as absolute as it might seem to be. The good news is there are some things you can do. You know, public employees can be paid by their public employer. It seems funny, but it is stated in the in the rules. You can accept a certificate, plaque, commemorative token as long as the resale value is less than twenty five dollars. So when I left T V W D, they were very nice and gave me some really nice, what I call parting gifts. And that's great. But they're all personalized in such a way that the, you know, the resale value, and that's the basis, the resale value is something significantly less than twenty five dollars. If you sold it on eBay, what would it be worth? A personalized plaque is really not worth much on eBay. So. You had a question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
I was just pointing out that you had a question.
Oh, okay. No, and I'm probably the question queen, but I I am a board member of Penn Two as well as interim Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District. I'm also the executive director volunteer of Vanport Place Marking Project, which has received funding from M C D D in the past. So I came about this now and I recused myself from voting on the overall budget way back when, and then just decided it was best not to ask for any money and stay out of the whole thing. How? Being a volunteer director as opposed to a paid director and admittedly, sometimes I'm paid a stipend if there's funds available in the type of grant that we get to pay for program administration. So I guess it's specific to me, but I think other board members or on other community boards that may or may not be affected. I, you know, literally said in a meeting, I'm not going to vote on the overall budget because the money's coming out of Penn Two and I'm involved with the place marketing project. And I I think the good things that are happening is Jim and his team are coming up with guidelines for how sponsorships are awarded. But that said, is that what is a potential perceived or? What would you do if you're me, you know?
Well, I, you know, the the specifics matter and and I obviously haven't weighed in, but but this is also an issue where it makes sense to really sort of get clarification, particularly from from the general counsel, just to make sure that there's clarity. And so again, this, I think, I'm I'm not trying to avoid your question because it's an awesome question, but I think it's really a matter of sort of, again, before that meeting ever occurs, contacting Jim or Hong and being able to sort of say, gee, I'm concerned about this issue. What do you think? And and really bounce it off of them and let them provide the guidance in terms of the specifics of how you participate in the decision.
Okay. And so I'll just be in touch at some point. If that's okay.
Yeah, I was going to say I'm happy to answer any specific questions and to Mark's point, this is, these areas are complex and the the laws are what they are. But it's really the facts that make it very confusing because there's always fuzzy facts as they apply to what I believe are clear standards.
Well, yeah.
That's a lawyer talking.
My, well, my way was complete avoidance. You know, it's like, oh, this doesn't really look great.
Yeah, you know, that's probably the safest position, but it but again, then you're sort of limiting your authority and your power as a board member. And so don't give that up just indiscriminately because it might be complex or confusing. Ask the questions and get a decision.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. There are some things you can do. We talked about accepting compensation as an employee. We talked about plaques. And and again, I hope most of you have a life outside of your role on the board. And and you are allowed to accept honoraria for for involvement in your profession, occupation, avocation, as long as it is not directly related to your role on the board. Wendy?
You have five minute warning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Other things in terms of, you know, reimbursement for travel expenses. That's pretty straightforward. And you can accept gifts when it's reasonable to believe that the source doesn't have a legislative or administrative interest. So the example would be you you win a raffle prize at a conference. This is a prize that was donated by an organization that that the district never does business with and would never do district business with. Can you accept the gift? The answer is probably yes. But again, it has to be very clear that you're not doing business with that organization. Penalties are important. They're listed here. And again, the key is that they could be five thousand dollars per violation and potentially these are individual claims as opposed to claims against the organization. Board meetings, I don't have a lot of details here, but but what's important is that the board meetings are conducted as public meetings. That's a quorum of the board. And and that the board is acting in its official capacity, deliberating towards a decision or making decisions. So can a quorum of the board meet outside of a public meeting? Yeah, technically, the answer is yes, but from a practical and best practice standpoint, it's not a good idea. And so there's shades of gray there, but but it's really all about acting in your official capacity. The thing I really want to hit on is communication between board members. And what's really key is no serial meetings. What's a serial meeting? Board member one talks to board member two, who talks to board member three, who talks to board member four, that we play this game of telephone to be able to finesse a decision outside of the public forum. That's strictly prohibited. Don't let that happen. Don't be participant in that process. Similarly, email. Email can be very challenging at times. You know, information is sent to all the board members and a board member then chooses to reply all with an opinion or a perspective. In some cases, that's been interpreted as participating in deliberations outside of the public forum. So as a board member, I personally recommend against board members using the reply all button on email. Hong, you you want to you want to tell me what I meant to say?
No, no, I I just wanted to add that I and I understand that we have some new board members since the last time we took up this issue that there was in fact a memo from from our legal department to this board about a year ago on a public meeting and executive sessions and serial meetings. So there is a memo in a board packet. I would say a year or eight months ago, but some other staff may be able to recall it correct more accurately, but.
Awesome.
So there is a memo.
And it's important stuff for sure. And executive session, again, you can't just claim executive session because it's an awkward topic and you don't want to discuss the issue in in open session. There's very specific reasons. And again, I'm sure your counsel would guide you through that process. Keys to success are really here. It's all about working together and collaborating, communicating, working together with a shared vision of the organization. And frankly, holding your other board members accountable for their performance. And the board holding the organization accountable for its overall performance. And, and the other piece I will add here is just communication. No secrets, no surprises, that's really the essence for the keys to success of your organization. If, if I could offer one sort of piece of advice, it would be to prepare for the meetings. Review the material in advance and be prepared. Ask those clarifying questions in advance as we discussed. Follow the meeting laws. Avoid public debate with members of the public, that's just not constructive or professional. And avoid public squabbles between board members, uh, if you want to have a difference of opinion, that's awesome. You can have that conversation offline outside of a board meeting. Uh, at the end of the day, each board member is entitled to their opinion, just do it in a way that's respectful. Um, I don't know that there's anything here, oh, the, the key thing here is. Once a decision's been made, please move on. Um, I have seen board members who just, you know, dig in their heels, kicking and screaming, just don't agree. The board made a decision, it's time to move on, that, that decision needs to get implemented. And so, don't be the person that's sort of the uh. Kicking and screaming, dragging them along all the way, it's just not productive, it's not uh. In keeping with the sort of professionalism of the organization that you're trying to cultivate. So, to wrap it up. Key piece, one thing, decisions and policy are made by the board, not the individual board members. You have a very, as a board, you have a very limited number of direct employees, the executive director, chief engineer, general counsel. Work through them on all of these issues. Get oriented, be present, be prepared, be informed, be honest and courteous. Uh, it's sort of like the Boy Scout oath there. Um, maintain a commitment of accountability, both accountability by your other board members as well as accountability of the staff. Invest in the board, invest in your staff in terms of preventative maintenance to hopefully limit the risk of problems in the future. And last, but certainly not least, communicate, 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 share the information. Share in a way that's constructive and positive and collaborate in a way that hopefully leads to really solid decisions. I'm done.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, uh, questions?
I'll just offer, also offer that uh, STO has a board member training available and I'm gonna be sending out that. That link, um, that's a lot of great um, and specific topics if you're interested in following up.
Bob, you had a question?
I, I do, and it may be another one that you refer to um. Uh, council, but um, I, I'm curious, you know, for, for board members that work for advocacy organizations, nonprofit advocacy organizations. That interact directly with the district, um. And may have an agenda associated with the district, how, how do you navigate that in terms of conflict of interest?
Well, you saw right through me, I, I'd refer it to council, uh. I, it, it's, again, the specifics matter and, and it could be that there are issues where. There's, it just doesn't enter into the realm of conflict of interest. And there could be others that cross the line and would be a very direct conflict of interest, and so. The, the specifics of each situation need to be considered on their own merit and it's a case by case decision.
And I'll. I'll just add, um, and it seems like Bob, your question's a lot like Mary Helen, where you both are working for uh, or have interest or um, ties with other association. At least the conflict of interest law that Mark just went through talks about you're using. Your position at this board to gain personal financial gains. Or avoid a personal financial detriment, and so that's the, that, I think that's the test is are you. Personally gaining uh, in, in your personal world uh, from your board role, but. How that plays out uh, down the chain in terms of your other uh, positions, uh, that is the fuzzy facts area that we can. Get into as necessary.
I totally agree, and. It, it sort of depends on, well, what is your role with this other organization? If you're an officer of that organization versus if you just have sort of, you go to the meetings occasionally, that's a very different role.
It seems like advocating for different policies is an appropriate role for a board member because there isn't necessarily a financial benefit to or against you. Uh, similar to, you know, a pro-business interest might want to look at low rates and you may want to look at. You know, setbacks of levies or whatever, those things are within the realm of a legitimate policy discussion at the board level. I believe.
Thank you. Well, you, you've been remarkably patient, been a great audience, asked some really good questions, hopefully you found this helpful. Um, again, if there are. Other follow-up questions that you have or need additional information, don't hesitate to work through staff, they'll, they'll forward them to me. And similarly, again, as, as Wendy mentioned, we have a really awesome training program, okay, I'm a little biased, uh, but. But feel free to get signed up for those uh, additional training sessions and uh, and come to one of our conferences at some point.
I wanted to say thank you too, because I went. To one of the trainings that you did and, and another woman whose names completely escaped me in twenty seventeen, I think. Um, in Tigerd, and obviously I lost a lot of what I learned there, but I did unearth that public um, record, a public. Officials booklet that you showed in your thing, so I, I would encourage other people to maybe take refresher courses. Um, or maybe people will retain things better than I do, but um, this has been very helpful, thanks.
Yeah, my pleasure. With, with that, I'll bail and uh, return you to your regular work session, if that's all right.
Thank you, Mark, and thanks to STO for all the support.
You bet. See ya.
We're, um, we're just a little bit behind, and so if it's okay with everyone, I think we'll take a one, one, two-minute tops break. Get a glass of water, whatever you need to do, so we'll just back in at about uh, two twenty-two, two twenty-three, if that works for everybody.
Come back, everyone, if you can hear my voice.
And Tanny had texted me there, he's, maybe he's back, he had to step away for just a moment, was gonna try and get back as soon as he could, so. And then same with Corky, how Corky looks like he signed on terrific. Thank you for doing back-to-back meetings, Corky.
It's what I do.
He doesn't have anything better to do. Um, I can say that, um, I, I just wanted to put a plug in for your Bike the Levy. Um, on the, I believe, I think on your website, you can click on a video. Um, that includes some footage of Ed Washington and the ride, and it's very well done and. Should encourage other people, you should use it as a selling tool to do the bike levy um, next year. You know, um, because I think if people saw that, they'd see it looked like everybody had a great time.
Maybe Ed can do another one this year, so.
Oh, good, okay, so, and maybe Ed can, he, he was there and spoke to everybody, so that was, um. You gave a great speech, I expect, I especially liked your, um. This isn't that, I, now I'm not gonna be able to say it, something about it, but it's more about prayer for the future, so I, I think that was a great line that you used.
Oh, thank you very much, I uh, was there, I did not ride, um, I didn't bike, I did that about. Two years ago, uh, two or three years ago, and. Uh, it had been the first time I'd been on a bike since I had my left knee replaced. And I don't do that anymore. It was, it was a great ride, but. I would never do that again, but uh, it was a really a, a pleasure just having the opportunity to. Chat with all the people there and to share with them. Uh, that part of, of, of a lot of what. We're all working on, so it's always a pleasure, thank you very much, Mary Ellen, for your comments, your thoughts.
I think we've all trickled back in, at least that's my hope, um. We are set up here for. Fourth and final agenda item for today, the equity strategy development. Jeff, you want to take it off from here?
Yeah, if I can kick it off, Wendy, could you put up the slide deck?
I think I have got it, Jim, so I'll give you just a second, yep.
So we are here in our continuing series of conversations with you, seeking direction and guidance. Uh, and emphasis around our equity action planning. And uh, our goal here today is to continue the work you've been doing over the last couple of meetings, if we could go one more slide. So we are in the phase one step of our work, um, building off of work that your colleagues at MCDN did in creating an equity policy that called on staff to develop an equity. Action plan that was both agency-wide and department-specific. As staff began digging into that work, we realized that we had a much stronger mandate for the urban district and it is of course our collective goal to stand up the new district in the next two years. So we felt like we could. Move ahead, uh, based on the MCDN policy and work with this urban board. To create an equity framework and then move into equity action planning, which will come next, um, so. Once we get this framework adopted by you folks, we will then begin the work of creating an equity action plan, which we will be working with the board directly on, and we will seek board approval of that plan. And then once that plan's approved, of course, we will begin both the implementation actions and establishing both internal and external accountability mechanisms to ensure we make continued progress on this important work. And I think it's important to go back to not only the MCDN equity policy, but also. To uh, our legislative mandates, which incorporates the, the direction from the legislature and the governor that we are to incorporate equity and social justice into all, all aspects of the district's operation. So that's why we are here today. And specifically, uh, today, we are going to. Take a look at the definition of equity that is in the draft framework prepared by staff. And some of the uh, related draft goals that we have prepared. Once you guys have had that conversation, then we're gonna move on, we'll incorporate all your feedback, both from the previous meetings and this one. And we will send you a proposed draft equity framework in its entirety. And we hope that we can complete your discussion and evaluation of that in the next uh, month or so, hopefully adopting it by the end of the fiscal year, but if we need more time. We will take that time because this is such an important topic. And today, we do have Amber Ontiveros and Isabel Kennedy from Ontiveros and Associates, they've been terrific in providing expert support to the staff team. And the facilitation services with you all. To help tease out the guidance and direction that you want, and so today, they're gonna help us walk through. Our draft equity definition and equity goals. And they will help facilitate some small breakouts and a report back to all of us, so unless there are questions of me, which I would be happy to answer. I'd like to turn it over to Amber and Isabel for their excellent. Expertise and support services to all of us to make progress on this incredibly important topic.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you, board members, um, I'm Amber Ontiveros, uh, Isabel, if you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you, so today we're going to uh, discuss the, the goals and the definition, they are in your packet. Um, I think it starts on page twenty-five or something like that in your packet, we're going to now, um. Show the uh, the, the goals, there's eight goals, and then we're gonna briefly talk about the definition, then we're gonna go into a breakout group where we have a few questions where we would love to get your feedback. Next slide. Okay, so there's really eight goals, and as Jim mentioned, um, as per uh, the direction from the governor, the, you know, um. Integrating equity into the operations is many things, and so it's everything from. Uh, and, and you don't need to read all this, I'll just, I just give a recap, everything from diversifying your workforce. To looking at resources to diversify your, you know, the board. To looking at opportunities for DBEs and for minority contractors when you actually procure services, to engage. Underrepresented populations in your decision-making. To the way that you actually prioritize the investments that you make. To also ensuring that the way you practice emergency management is, is done in an equitable way. To also the outcomes of holding your staff accountable to meeting these operational activities. And to, of course, sharing the culture and historical practices that have occurred. Um, in the region, uh, as part of your leadership of a board. Those are really the goals, and so, um, after we, after you all, you know, look at the goals and look at the definition and, and develop the action plan. Then we're gonna take these and develop an implementation plan with the staff to. Teach them how do you actually achieve these goals, also in relation to the accountability measures. Uh, next slide, Isabel. So if those are the goals. What would equity look like? There's, there's two, two goals. For equity that we're trying to achieve, one is ensuring that the way, the process. That you use to engage uh, underrepresented in, individuals and populations. Is done in a way to ensure they can impact policymaking with you. That's process equity, process. And then the, the second type of um, of equity is, is the outcome, so if you have these kinds of investment, this type of workforce, this type of board. What is the outcome as a result of these policies that then feed into the outcome of those policies? So that looks at. Are you balancing, as a result of those policies, are the outcomes of those policies. Resulting in balanced benefits as well as burdens? That's the idea be, behind outcome equity, and you can look at the, you know, the full definition um, in your packet. And we can, um, we can walk through that once we go into breakout groups and, um, Isabel, I don't know how. Is someone going to put us into the different breakout groups? Okay, alright, so, um, we can go into the breakout groups now, we will collect, we have some, um. Questions that we would like to ask you. What do you like, what's missing, what questions do you have, this is an opportunity for you to talk as a, as a board. Um, with your different cohorts and, and, you know, exchange ideas, and then we will take your feedback. And um, massage the language, and I'll also be happy to answer any questions as a collective. Following um, our breakouts if, if you, um, if you have some really specific questions, totally game.
Yeah, so board's gonna be in breakouts and staff are gonna stay out, so you guys can be candid and, um, and, and do your, your board leadership role, and we'll get the feedback back, um, at the report out. I'm counting on you guys to have found ways to eliminate an equity across our society in the twenty minutes that you've had together.
I'm saying nothing because this is being. Um, we're publicly recorded, so.
Well, I know staff really appreciate you guys doing, taking the time and doing this work to, to give us some direction, thank you very much.
So I'm gonna recap some of, uh, some of the recommendations that we heard from our group. Um. Really good point around the, the goals, which was that, uh, there was, there's a disconnect between. You know, what the mission of your organization is as well as, um. Uh, the goals, so for example, y'all do. Flood safety and that isn't necessarily included in the goals, so we need to make it um, more clearly conjoined. The other thing is, um. There were some comments that Eric had provided. In uh, the previous equity mission and vision, and so we're gonna, we're gonna collect those and we'll make sure, uh, one of the other board members. Uh, sought to see those so that, you know, we can all learn from each other, which I think is a great idea, and to share those comments so that, you know. It can spur other ideas, uh, so that was the other piece of feedback that we received.
And Eric, I need to be accountable for you for dropping that thread, so my apologies, thank you for bringing it up and, and uh, breathing life back into those comments, I appreciate that you sent them.
Um, and the only other, the only other comment that we received was um, regarding, including disability in the statement of equity and, you know, one of the things that we. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about was that is that there isn't a specific population identified. It, it, it just refers to underrepresented populations, in which case the need to include disability in the, in the analysis related to equity will be included. So we will absolutely do that. Isabel, do you want to talk about some of the comments you heard?
Yeah, absolutely. So, building off of what you were just saying about the specific population, there was a question in our group about defining, again, kind of the, the range of historically underserved and underrepresented and what that means, who kind of is inside of that circle? And whether that's sort of specific to the actual district or whether that's a more sort of historical and national definition. We also talked about the goals. And there was some agreement that they were measurable, but there was also a question about how they would be measured and what that will look like, which will be part of the implementation plan step. There was also a question about, related to the definition of the, the process equity, which was about how far does equity go for the district? And what, what the responsibility and the capacity of the organization was to deal with that? And Mr. Molender, I hope I'm saying your last name right, had a great example that I was hoping you'd be willing to share with the whole group.
Certainly, Isabel. So the, the question really comes down to if we have a flood safety event and, and the power goes out for six days, then Peg and I are going to lose our refrigerator. And the impact on us is, it's going to cost us some money. But we have the financial resources to be able to handle that. On the other hand, in the Fox Run community down at M L K and Vancouver Way, if you have an eighty-three-year-old grandmother that's living in a trailer there that loses her refrigerator, she may not have that safety net to be able to fall back on. And this is an opportunity for us to have a discussion around how much more resources do we apply to somebody that doesn't have that safety net?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So, counselor, may I follow up on that, on your example? So, in that example, are you applying that to? I'm assuming you're not applying it to process equity, which is, you know, engagement of that, of that underrepresented group or those types of individuals. But more or less, you're focusing on the outcomes of?
That's correct. It, it's really focused on outcome equity.
Right.
So that we can have a discussion about that.
Okay, so just a, just a follow-up question that will help me help when we work with the, with the team for implementation. So to what extent does the, this organization do implementation? I mean, do, deal with that type of thing on the implementation level versus planning?
I'm, I'm not certain I understand the question. So when we plan for flood safety events, there are certain communities that just have a more difficult time getting out. So disabled, elderly, in planning for an event, they do naturally get a higher priority than somebody that is completely mobile. But in terms of recovery from that, I think that we, I'd like to hear from my fellow board members about how they would feel about an outcome equity that actually compensates the eighty-three-year-old grandmother in Fox Run at a higher level than it would to a homeowner that has the capabilities.
And Amber, I think it's fair to say that this is one of our newer mandates.
Yes.
And so I think this is the direction that staff is seeking from the board. Do you want us to pursue the development of programs that might assist with recovery? And if so, what are the factors we should consider? Because they have to determine how much revenue they want to put to these things.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to tease out.
Just to add to Eric's comment, because I've been saying this about people less likely to be able to recover. One of the blunt questions I got in meeting with Deltawood residents, because I try to tell them what's going on, is it's all fine and dandy. You can pull me out of the river, but then what? Because I won't have a house. I won't know where to go. And I was kind of taken aback by that because I couldn't, another, I couldn't really answer because then who steps up? Because they have no food, no housing, no shelter, no anything. And so I don't know how far this process, you know, how that kind of question gets answered. Because I think you might hear more of it from different people once they're able to hear. Because I advocated in our meeting about saying flood safety and, you know, how that affects people in Bridston and East Columbia and Fox Run and the Mobile Home Park, all those kinds of things. And so how we balance the rescue versus then what? So I, I think that's something we need to either think about, discuss, or ignore and hope for the best.
Um, so we have two other members, board members that would like to ask questions. Before we go to Eric and then James, I just want to offer this before we completely go down a rabbit hole. So the outcome equity is about balancing benefits and burdens with regard to what you have control over. And the other thing is, I would just say that. So what that would mean is we would work with the, the staff to identify what are those benefits and what are those burdens? And then we would develop an approach for how you would assess the balance. So I'm just offering that just as a very high level so that we don't, because we can seriously go down into a rabbit hole that we don't need to go down yet. So that I just want to offer that first. Eric, sir?
Well, to, to some degree, I mean, I, I'm responding to what Eric Molander had asked for, you know, the view of others and the illustration, as well as the, the, you know, the illustration or the comment that Mary Ellen made about, you know, save somebody by pulling them out of the river, now what? Those are completely valid concerns, valid needs. But from my standpoint, they are a step or two beyond what the mission and the role and responsibility of this organization is. There may be other organizations that, you know, that's appropriate for certainly other assistance and recovery, you know, whether it's FEMA or Red Cross and so forth. But as I'm looking at what's in chapter five fifty, it talks about, you know, the Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District is created for the purpose of acquiring, purchasing, constructing, improving, operating, and maintaining works, public works, infrastructure, you know, works in order to do all these following things. The focus is on the physical infrastructure to provide support, to reduce flood risk, to protect people and property from flood risk, to respond to flood emergencies. Okay, maybe you can stretch that one. To convey water for the purpose of flood safety, to contribute to water quality, fish habitat, and flood plain restoration, landscape resilience, to promote equity and social justice in all aspects of the district's operations. Well, okay, maybe you want to stretch that one. And to prepare for the impact of climate change. And then finally, for the information regarding cultural history in the managed flood plain. That's what I, you know, I, I see those. That's the established purpose. So whereas that eighty-three-year-old grandmother who lost electricity and lost all the, the food in her refrigerator is going to suffer some hardship, and I don't discount that that's occurring, I think that's beyond what the role of what is intended for this organization. And to tie in with your comment just before I started about what the process, the outcome equity is, going back to, what is it? Page twenty-six in the, in the packet? Yeah, I agree. It's regarding the, the programs and services that the organization distributes. So whatever program we've got, whatever resources we're distributing, we need to make sure we do that in an equitable fashion. But I don't think that means that we have to take on the global responsibility of trying to ensure that everybody equitably recovers from an event. So anyway, that's, you asked for a view.
James?
I guess I'll just say briefly, I, I work for essentially a public utility that, you know, collects what some people would consider to be a pretty hefty monthly quarterly bill in exchange for services. And when our service fails, it, it's unpleasant for anyone. And it, we understand it affects people. That failure affects different people differently and disproportionately. So I guess maybe the, the question is, in terms of outcome equity, I, and without going out down too deep a rabbit hole, the, the rate making that we apply to people who live within the managed flood plain, the rate making has to be very careful. Otherwise, those people who are, who currently pay a monthly bill, that bill is, can be a lot of money, and it's assumed that bill is going to go up, I think. And so we just have to be very careful. That's sort of the front end of what Eric Molander, I think, is talking about, is how do we not put people in, in a worse position? Second would be kind of on the back end, when we look at emergency preparedness, how, how, when, if and when things fail, what do different failures look like? And how will that affect different people differently? And maybe having at least some understanding if it's out of scope for the district? If, how do we understand that if people have damage or inconvenience impacts, how do we know where they might be covered beyond us? Like, where is their safety net? And so just being mindful of the environment we're working in and recognizing the extent to which we can help increase the benefits, reduce the burdens, and know who, other, what are other programs and resources exist so that we're, we're helping to wrap around the community?
Yeah, that's great. So these are really, really good. This is a really good policy conversation. And I will just, let me, I'm just going to tease this out a little bit. And then this, this'll, this, we will take notes, strong notes, because this is the conversation that we need to be working on when it comes to the implementation work. So I agree with all the, all of the comments that were said here. So Eric's question is the right question because the question is the right question to determine how far do you go? Eric's comment was the right response because it, it has to, assessing what are the benefits and what are the burdens within the overall policymaking role that you oversee is the box that you're playing with? In which case, it is about, that's why it ties to the goals of opportunities for, for businesses to build the infrastructure. And the other, one of the other goals is the equity practices in emergency management. In other words, how are you sure, ensuring that the way that you do that maintenance and the way that you do that operation looks at the failure of the infrastructure in an equitable way? And then that also ties to the prioritization of investments. So anyways, all of these things are tied together. And and if we develop the implementation plan in the right way, we will stay within the box of activities that you actually do to address emergency preparedness, to assess different failures that affect people differently, because that will be part of the analysis that you can then foresee. Hope that was helpful. Cool. I'm a geek, so. Jim, sir, I don't know where we were going from here. Apologies.
Was there additional comments coming out of Isabel's group? Or did that cover it? Just to make sure we?
Um, there was one last thought, which was, there was a question about the definitions of structural, distributional, and transgenerational equity that they, we wanted some more clarity on what those definitions mean. So we can note that down and follow up. I think that was everything. If anybody else from the group wants to jump in and fill in something I might have missed, please go ahead.
Okay, we can tease that out and provide it to y'all.
So I think our next steps are to get together with the team from Ontiveros and the staff team and really pour over the feedback you guys provided over the last several meetings, make changes to the existing draft framework document in a timely way, and get that entire document back out to you for your review and consideration, an additional discussion. Wendy, I believe we're set. We have some time at the late June meeting, is that correct? Or do we move that to July? I apologize for not having that committed to memory.
June twenty, I believe we have thirty minutes on June twenty.
So it's my expectation that you guys won't be in a position to adopt that at that time because I think it'll be the first time you'll see it all pulled together with your comments. So I think it's probably wise for us to expect that you guys will get it in your packet, have a chance to conduct some additional review. Ideally, if you have specific questions, you can give me a call or we can connect you with Ontiveros ahead of that meeting to try and get them answered. If not, it's fine to bring them up in the meeting. We want all of you to hear all of your questions. And we'll get some additional feedback and then maybe try and incorporate that feedback into a final version of the draft for your July consideration. That would be an ambitious goal, but one that perhaps we can obtain. I want to stress, it's really important to me that you guys feel comfortable with this framework because it's really going to set the direction for the action plan. So I'm interested in making sure you have adequate feedback. And it looks like you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm sorry, I thought I had my hand up, but I was clicking on other hands. That was really not the hand that should have been up there. But I would just like to say that I really appreciate the opportunity for having this discussion today. And I think that, that what, what I'm seeing is that this is just the tip of the iceberg. And there's a whole lot of ice underneath the waterline. And, and I appreciate so very much everybody bringing that out today. So I, I just, I, I, and I didn't realize that there were two Eric. Is Eric from Trout, is, is it Eric from Troutdale? Is that right?
We have two Eric's.
Oh, okay. Eric from Troutdale?
Oh, okay. Eric from Troutdale. Appreciate your comments. I really do. And uh, the other Eric as well. So, but I, I just think that it's. Uh, since I've been sitting in these meetings, uh, I, I'm leaving the day uh sort of. With a, with a stronger heartbeat because I, I just appreciate the fact that, that you all are willing to look at. At the total picture. And it may not be. When it all comes out in the wash, it may be different from what any of us were thinking about. So I just appreciate the, the input and, and the help. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think like a lot of the new mandate work, um, this is gonna be evolutionary. And it's kind of iterative as we go. So I'm again grateful for your willingness to put the time in on these topics, because I know you're anxious to get to the revenue development pieces, but. Some of this foundational work is gonna really inform uh. What you guys wanna present to the public in terms of your operating and capital revenues. So. And I agree, we're just getting started. That's all we have for today. That's a little bit, you know, rare for us that we're done early, but I think we could celebrate that. And looking outside it, it's a little more gray, but it's still pleasant. So perhaps we should free you. Mister Acting Chair.
Yes, sir. Are there any more uh questions or comments before we adjourn? Okay, seeing none, I just wanna point out quickly the la- one of the last slides from the SDAO presentation. Said to make the most of your opportunity. One way is to be honest and courteous and that's modeled by all of you folks. And Mister Washington, I really appreciate your, your comment about your feelings because. It's um, it's always nice to, when you interact with certain people informally or in a meeting, but if you can leave that. Situation. In a better place than when you started, that says something really good. So I, I really appreciate you mentioning that. So I, I, it's a long meeting, long meeting and, and really nice to, really nice to connect with all of you.
I liked his comparison to an iceberg. My husband was in the Navy for twenty-two years. And he uses that term a lot because he said, what you see is not gonna hurt you, but what you don't see will kill you. So um, I think that's um, a really good analogy that we should keep in mind. But thanks, Ed. You always have those little quips about really good quotes and I try to write them down so I remember them. Thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate that. Mister Chair. Can, can I take about forty seconds? And when she mentioned that her husband was uh in the Navy, some years ago, I was invited to uh join a Toastmasters squad. And I didn't know anything about Toastmasters. So the gentleman told me, he said, well, you, you come to the next meeting and you'll do the icebreaker. And all I remember hearing was icebreaker. So I knew I was gonna make a speech, so I rushed on. And did all this research on icebreakers. Came back. With about a five-page report on icebreakers. He says, oh, no. He said, you're just doing your first speeches. It, it wasn't about icebreakers. So it's, it's amazing how you can get mixed up. I mean, I did some good research on icebreakers. I. I knew all of them and I was prepared to discuss it at that, at that Toastmasters. And I felt so embarrassed. He says, oh, no, the icebreaker is just the opening speech. You didn't have to do one on, on the actual ships, but I, and they let me do it. So it worked out fast. So.
That story is a great icebreaker.
Yeah, right. So this has been a wonderful icebreaker today. It really has. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Really do.
Makes me mindful of the Missoula flood and the broken ice that caused all of this need for a flood safety agency in the first place. So.
Absolutely.
All right, you all. Thank you so much for your time and uh efforts on our, all of our behalf. Really grateful to all of you. Thank you.
Thanks.
We're adjourned. Have a great day.
Yeah, bye-bye.